Are we all set? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:05. And tonight, I'd actually like to start tonight's meeting with a moment of silence for a former school committee member, Mr. Frank White, who passed recently. So we're going to start off with a moment of silence for Frank White, please. Thank you. So I'd like to say a few words about Frank, and I know Frank's daughter is here tonight. And she shared that there are some of Frank's family members that are streaming from home tonight. So I think I met Frank about 12 years ago. My first term on the school committee, I had the honor of actually serving with Frank on that committee, and Diane was part of that as well. And I think there's so many Narragansett people that know Frank. And when I think of Frank, he was such a strong advocate for students, and he loved the Narragansett School District. He was truly a champion for children and an advocate for students. And one of the things that always makes me smile and makes me happy is when Frank first served on the school committee, we had a vacancy that happened in the middle of the term. And so the town council got to select a resident. They could pick whoever they wanted. And without any input at all from the school committee or the sitting superintendent, they picked who I thought, they felt would really absolutely advocate for the taxpayer and the fiscal. And I think one of the town council members said, "We need someone that's going to get the school department to sharpen their pencils and make the cuts that they need to be." So they found this seasoned veteran elected official who was a professor, had a strong background in economics and finance. I think he was a Republican, Diane. But it was, you know, he was really going to get us to sharpen our pencils and tighten up the budget and make the cuts that had to happen. And Frank was the strongest advocate for students in the district. And he spent time analyzing our budget and equally amount as much time analyzing the town's budget. So when we would have a joint worksheet workshop with the town council, Frank would ask very articulate, pointed questions to the town manager and the town finance director about the town's budget. And it was just wonderful. And you saw Frank everywhere. He volunteered in the schools. He was at every single chorus concert, band concert, drama club production, peer school National History Day guest, judge, senior project judge. He was everywhere, volunteering in the schools every day, passionate for the Narragansett school system. But I just, I kind of love the irony of that. They really thought it was someone that's going to kind of stick it to the school committee, and he really was challenging the town council all the time about their spending, which was fantastic. And when we had our budget workshops, the superintendent would do the opening slides. And then Frank was always making very articulate, high-level charts and graphs. And Frank would present the finances. Karen was here, she remembers that. And with the, you know, spending of the school department, he always had the spending of the town. And a lot of the principals were here, you know, when Frank was here too. I just love that. And, you know, they, everybody had a high level of respect and regard for Frank, from the town council, from the school committee, Democrats, Republicans, independents, it didn't matter. He was very highly regarded, very well-respected, and loved and cherished, not only obviously by his family, but just for everyone who had the opportunity to know him. And we miss him, and, you know, we thank him for his decades of service. He was on the Narragansett School Committee 20 years before. He served with me, long, long time. And we thank him for his service. And, you know, I'm grateful for having known him for so long. And with that, Diane, I think you knew him probably even longer than I've known him. So I'm going to turn it over if you want to say a few things.
Yes, just, just to add to what Tammy said. It really was an honor to serve with Frank during these years on the school committee and a joy to get to know him. He was a kind, thoughtful, intelligent man with a very droll sense of humor. And to this day, at the end of Karen's budget report, I can hear Frank saying to her that he hoped she would, he would, that she would squirrel away any unencumbered, unexpended funds. So he was a wonderful man.
I'll be as brief as possible. It was an honor to serve on the Knights of the Rockingham Arch Selection Committee, as Frank did also, and to have been able to nominate him to be awarded the recognition as a knight for his many years of dedicated hard work, volunteering and service to this town and the Narragansett public schools. While I wasn't able to serve with him on the school committee, it is very easy to recognize the type of person Frank was, one that was always so full of joy in helping others and seeing students learn and excel. He will be very missed, but never forgotten at any of our meetings. Thank you.
When I think of Frank, so Frank was on the committee that hired me. And I got to spend a lot of time with Frank in, in the years that he was on the committee that I was here. And I know Kathy Sapala, who, who was the superintendent before I was here, agrees. We could not have asked for someone more knowledgeable, more caring, and bigger advocate for what is right for students. And, you know, Frank had great good humor. But underneath that good humor was a mind that was as sharp as any you could ever meet. He, one of, I can remember one day, you know, he, he came in and he was carrying the textbook that he had written about fluid dynamics. And, you know, it was amazing. And was, you know, to this day, the core text for fluid dynamics across the world. And at the same time, he knew I had small children. He was sharing a book that his daughter, one of his daughters is, is an author, and sharing the children's book that his daughter had written with me. And so, you know, again, he was incredibly caring. And I've been kind of out in the world and, and, you know, people have found out that I work in Narragansett. And I can't tell you how often someone asks me, "Do you know Frank White?" And so he, he has a fame that moves, you know, beyond just a little Narragansett. But as I said to Ellen, his daughter, when, when she was here tonight, you know, "We'll miss him desperately." I think, you know, the biggest honor that, you know, I, I like to say about Frank is when I think of someone that had a life well-lived, I think of Frank White. And he, you know, was remarkably accomplished, cared deeply for his family, cared deeply for his community, and did everything he could to support all of that.
Thank you. So with that, I'd like everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I think this is wonderful timing for our spotlight for tonight. I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Cummings to do some introductions. And I am so excited that we have students that are going to be here and singing for us tonight. Because as I mentioned, Frank loved listening to the chorus at the peer school and the high school. So Dr. Cummings, can you do some introductions?
I sure can. So I would like if Mary Ann and Mike could come up to the podium. All right. And, you know, Mr. Simeone is famous in his own right for his Friday piano playing. So recently featured on one of the news channels. I forget which one, I think Channel 10? ABC, okay. And so Mike has been playing piano as, as people come in to raise money for charity, which has been great. But even more accomplished is Mike's work with our music scholars. And they have been doing a wonderful job throughout the year. I know they are excited to perform here tonight. But I'll let Mike and Mary Ann say a couple of words.
There we are. And I couldn't agree with you more, Tammy. It's absolutely perfect that they're performing tonight the night that we're talking about Frank. Because I don't go to a concert or a performance and don't think, oh, he was always there, always there for those. It was really, it was just terrific. These singers, you know, there's a tremendous amount of commitment to be in the chorus. These, these students, they come in early, they stay after school, they give up a portion of their day during the soar period to take a chorus where other students may be working on schoolwork and meeting with a teacher, getting their homework done. But they're sacrificing that free time to pursue something that they really love. And that's really great. You know, in addition to this, they're taking their music class as well. So it really is a commitment on their, and their families, especially those early morning practices or those after-school practices. So it's a big commitment. And, and I think that's contagious because Mike has such a great commitment to the music program, not only for the program he's run at the pier for many, many years, but also, as Pete was saying, you know, the Friday morning, you know, during COVID, we were like, we need to lift everybody's spirit. What can we do? And so he rolls out the piano and it's kind of become a staple now since, I don't know, it's been over, well over, yeah, two years now, right? Yeah. So, I don't know, Mike, if you want to tell us a little about the students that are here with us tonight? I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much for having us. I appreciate the invitation. We, performing for you tonight, have the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade chorus. We're going to start with the National Anthem. And then we'll sing a piece called Cold Snap. We're finally, I think, getting out of our winter weather here with some spring weather this week, which has been very welcome. So this might be the last time we perform that piece as winter finally looks like it's in the rearview mirror. So I do thank you guys very much for having us out. And I invite our chorus members from the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade chorus to please come on up. As we are starting with the National Anthem, I invite you to just please stand and remove your caps.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. We really, really do appreciate that. So what we're going to do is we're going to take probably a two-minute recess, because I know the kids have homework and things to do. And then we'll resume right with open forum. So we're just going to take a two-minute recess so the kids can scoot out. Thank you. All right, we're going to resume our meeting. And we are going back into the agenda. And it is now time for open forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Sure, come on up and state your name, please.
Okay, I think I turned that off. Okay, back on. Hi, I'm Tivia Edge. I have a seventh grader and two fifth graders at Narragansett Pyramid Middle School. And again, talking about, like you guys said, advocating for students in the district, I'm going to again talk about the math program. Back in September, we discovered the changes that Narragansett made to the math curriculum and pathways. Since then, we've been working with parents and members of the school district to address some of the shortcomings of this decision. Again and again, we have bumped into the issue of equity. Over the weekend, I was talking to my friend whose son is in seventh grade at Davisville Middle School. And she was sharing how well her son was doing in his pre-algebra class. Unfortunately, I couldn't share the same with her as my son hasn't been offered access to pre-algebra or accelerated math this year in seventh grade. None of the seventh graders have. I could go on to talk about how my seventh graders at Curtis Corner Middle School talk about their seventh grade accelerated math class, as Tammy well knows since she's in district. But I won't. Instead, I want to say that we, as a community, are concerned that Narragansett schools are not offering equitable access to pre-algebra or accelerated math in seventh grade compared to other schools across the state. We are also concerned with the lack of equitable access for our eighth graders to Algebra I compared to our neighboring districts. You may wonder why this matters and say, well, this new math pathway allows students to take a combo Algebra II geometry class that will get them to calculus their senior year without having to double up on courses. But this is deceiving. The new class meets four to five days a week with block scheduling, which essentially makes it two classes. This equates to doubling up on math. With this schedule, they no longer have room for electives like language, band, chorus, art, robotics, or other enriching classes, which many of these students excel in. We have met with Mary Ann, Emily, Gail, Linda, Stephanie, and the middle school math teachers twice. And they have been amazing. But unfortunately, we still don't have an equitable solution to eighth grade Algebra I, that problem. The main problem is the unwillingness of the district to offer this course at MPS during the school day for the upcoming school year. This would only be during this transition year while the middle school and high school schedules don't match up. Offering it before school or during first period every day, where they will miss up to 234 minutes of instruction time a week, is simply not acceptable and certainly not equitable compared to other districts. When our students start high school with students from NK, Jamestown, SK, and Montineer Clark, all of which offer seventh grade pre-algebra or accelerated math in eighth grade Algebra I during the regular school day without making them miss other classes, what are we going to tell them when they realize they didn't have access to the same opportunities that their peers did? We have spoken to RIDE about this lack of equitable access as well and hope to sell it within the district instead of having to go through the state. Thank you again for your time and support.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for open forum? Sure, come on up and then just state your name, please.
Hello, my name is Grayson Edge. I am in seventh grade at MPS. I am in chorus, band, and high school jazz band. I was on the soccer team for MPS and plan to join the tennis team this spring. I was also Gomez in this year's production of The Addams Family by the MPS Theater Program. I am a patrol leader in my Boy Scout troop that meets on Wednesday nights. I have put in over 15 hours of community service this school year. And I am planning to submit my paperwork to join National Junior Honor Society in a few weeks. What I don't have is equitable access to pre-algebra or accelerated math this year compared to my friends and relatives in North Kingstown. I have a 100% average in math this quarter. I had a 100% average for quarter one and a 99% average for math in quarter two. Even with these grades, I may not be able to take Algebra I next year if they offer it before school to interfere with my before-school chorus and band classes. If I have to take it at the high school and miss 78 minutes of class time every other day, I could possibly lose my place in National Junior Honor Society next year. Why can't I have the same opportunities as my friends in other districts? Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for open forum? Okay. So we are moving on to school reports. We did not have any executive session tonight. So there were no minutes to approve and no votes. So for school reports, let's start with the elementary school. And we'll work our way up because I like routine and predictability. So, okay. Hello, Ms. Lisa.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Happy to see everybody in person again. So mine will be brief. I have a couple of things to highlight at the elementary school. First and foremost, our PTO hosted our first event of the school year, for the new school year, I should say. We had a book fair sponsored by Wakefield Books. So we kept it local. And we decided to do just grades one through four because they're better shoppers. And we're hoping to expand it a little bit more next year in the fall to allow more volunteers in, which would also allow parents to come in and shop with their younger kids for pre-K and K. But it was a very successful event. But it was a very successful event. Every first through fourth grader received a book. And all of our preschool and K families received a voucher so they could actually go to the store and shop with their families. We found that as a good alternative for them, to allow shopping and have their parents to help them. So that was a great event. The kids were super excited. We did it during reading week, which we also had a whole week full of fun activities. We have our spirit day tomorrow. Wear green, which everyone's very excited about, minus the glitter. Thanks, Steve. We had a really exciting SEL wellness visit from the Commissioner of Education last Friday, honoring us and presenting us with a proclamation for our achievements in using so many SEL strategies and the work of Karen Festa introducing our conscious discipline and supporting that with our younger students. And we actually had her in on the action, doing some of the songs and dances. It was quite exciting. And the kids were thrilled. They knew she was a very important guest. We explained who she was, that she was the big boss of all the education in the state. They were kind of thrilled and surprised by that. And it was really nice to have someone come and honor us. We are getting ready for RICAS testing, starting in April. For ELA is April, and we think we're going to do okay. We've been, you know, our regular ongoing instruction should support the RICAS test as we have in the past. And with or without COVID, we'll see how we do. We're hoping for the best. And in May, we'll be doing our math. And tutoring, we have 35 students, the most yet, in our tutoring program for before and after school. The bulk of them are third and fourth graders, which we actually did target based on some of our data that we had in the area of need, which was focusing on response to text and problem solving, which would also help us with some of our RICAS. And we also have our first musical back. We are doing Annie, our fourth graders. And the students have been practicing weekly. And coming up soon, they'll be doing a little bit more practicing to be prepared for our April 4th and April 13th show. It will be for parents. We're not going to open it up to a big production because we still need to keep our safety in check for our cafeteria. We can only hold a certain amount of people in there, and we want to be as safe as possible. But the kids are very excited, and it's coming along quite nicely. So we're excited to have that. Any questions? No?
I just want to comment how refreshing it is to hear where it's sort of moving through this transition of COVID and where we're bringing back some of the great things that have been missed. So I just want to do it, make that clear again.
I will say, the kids, when they came to school that first Monday without their masks, honestly, it brought me to tears almost. It was so amazing to see their faces and how happy they were. And this week, we actually mixed them up for recess for the first time since COVID started. We were in pods. So recess has been a little bit crazier than usual, not going to lie, but it's been super fun. And kids are, you know, happy to be able to intermingle with their grade-level peers.
Right, we also know how important that is, that social dynamic of being with the different people.
Yeah, it's been great.
Congratulations. And I want to acknowledge, say congratulations with the commissioner coming to honor you and your students. That's really a wonderful opportunity for them to see and feel. And I also wanted to comment about the book event and keeping it local. What a great way to sponsor local businesses, too, that probably have been impacted, and inviting our students to remember that that's there.
They did a great, Wakefield Books did a fabulous job with the selection of books. They really targeted really great authors for the kids, high interest. And it was less like, I don't know if you're familiar with some of the other book vendors that tend to be a little bit splashy, and kids will buy pens and all kinds of posters and stuff.
There's more dollar store junk than books.
Yes. And we really had only bookmarks in addition to books. And, you know, it was great. And the quality of the books was really good. So we hope to keep that going. We did it last, well, let me remember, two years ago. We tried it with them, and they were then accommodating. Thank you. All right, have a great night, everyone.
Lisa, you said each child went home with a book.
Yeah, we made sure.
Was that given to them by Wakefield Books?
So some, no, our PTO sponsored that. Yeah, so, I mean, many kids brought funds. Some parents actually donated funds for books, you know, just in case, you know, a child needed a book. But the PTO made up for anyone that didn't have a book.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, it was awesome. So thank you.
Any other questions for the elementary school? All right, on to the peer school.
Hello, everyone. And just to second, Lisa, it was great seeing my fifth and sixth graders' faces for the first time, coming off the bus, and their smiles. It's like, oh, there you are. And they are seeing me, my face, for the first time. And then the eighth graders are like, oh, wow, what happened in two years? There you are. Didn't see that coming. So it was great. It's really been great. It's been, certainly has lifted the mood significantly at school. We had, we did our play, Addams Family, that was mentioned earlier. It was a great success. It really was a terrific production. And the timing was absolutely perfect because our audience, with masks were optional, the performers were maskless, so it really did help with the whole thing. But it was really, it was a great show. It was really well done, beautifully delivered. Sarah Kane, as always, just does a great job. And what's really nice, too, is she brings in the high school kids from the drama program there to help out there, like, you know, I guess associate, associate, associate producer, or, you know, the Foley, the Best Grip, or whatever those are, the Foley Boy, whatever those roles are. But it was terrific to see that, as much as it was a middle school production, there was a lot of hands-on with the high school kids as well, which is great. And then they make connections, and then our eighth graders go on to the high school, and they're connecting with the kids in the program there. So that was great. And, you know, thinking about Frank, you know, yes, at all the plays, but also he was a staple in the classroom. You know, there was nothing warm my heart more than to see Frank sitting next to a kid one-on-one, tutoring him in math and going over math programs. I mean, they love to see him coming. You know, I think sometimes he brought donuts, but don't tell the wellness committee. But it was great. Speaking of wellness, we had our own wellness week last week. We had each day, students were given a Google form to fill out. And if they filled out something, an activity, and each day, they were put into a raffle, and they won a prize. And we had Mindful Monday, Tranquil Tuesday, Workout Wednesday, Thankful Thursday. So they had to do something. That was, we gave them examples on how to be mindful, what to be thankful for. And then the kids that filled out the form, they were put into a raffle, and they won an opportunity to go to paint night for two people just down around the corner, I guess, at Mariner Square or across the street from Mariner Square. So that was great. That was kind of something that our Student Services Program put together for the kids. So that was fun. We also had NHD. I know some of you came out and were judges, so thank you for that. We have a lot of, you know, going to the states. We have quite a variety of things. We've got ERA, Alice Paul versus President Wilson, Indian Citizenship, the 1796 Treaty of Tripoli, the Cuban Missile Crisis. So a lot of really great things going. And a lot of those kids who did place, you know, first, they were immediately getting at it and making the improvements because they are really determined. I mean, our kids, they're not happy with just going to states. Like, they all want to go down to nationals because we have been doing it. It's tradition. We usually do send several kids down to the nationals, so they know it's obtainable. So they're really quite focused on it, which is terrific. I sat down with two students in their papers, having been a former English teacher, and got to play with a little MLA and citation fun. So that was great, too. So it's all hands on deck to get them ready to go. Our Unified Basketball Team is up and running. I know that Melissa went to the game today against Charahoe. It's really a terrific program. We did put up a win, but that's not what it's all about. But they're up and running. It's a great blend of kids. Tess, Tom Tessitore is our coach, and it's pretty magical what happens there out on the court with those kids. So that's great fun. We have RICAS coming up as well. April 5th and 7th will be our reading. We'll do the math as late as humanly possible so we can get more instruction in, but that'll be probably late May, mid to late May. We have tutoring running as well, not quite as robust a program as the elementary school. It's in, you know, horse water. Some kids just aren't inclined to stay after school and do tutoring when they're in middle school, but we do offer it certainly. And we have a lot of March Madness going on. I mean, it's madness anyways, in middle school, so why don't we just amp it all up? So we are bringing back the famed MPS March Madness that some of you may remember. So in leading up to March Madness, next week is Spirit Week. Each day, Monday's Pajama Day, and Tuesday is Sports Day, and then Hawaiian Day, Superhero Day. And then Friday's going to be School Color Day. Like, each class has a color they have to wear, and then we'll be doing Italians and percentages and who's the most spirited. And we're hoping to pull off maybe an all-school assembly on that Friday, kind of the things that we used to do all the time. And then Friday night, we end with March Madness. And we realize that, you know, the last students in the building that had a March Madness were maybe our seventh graders? I don't even think our seventh graders had it because I think we had to cancel it. So it's going to be great to bring that back. So looking forward to all the madness of that. But also March Madness, very creative staff that we have. The, one of the five, six teams has got March Madness Eye Ready. They literally have on the walls the brackets. And kids are teams. And then they're, you know, what they're scoring, how many they complete, what their score is, and then, so that, this was Mr. Canisette's idea, so that no one is actually bumped out of the racket. If you're, if you don't win your round, you are just subsumed by the winning team. So you just keep moving, moving, moving. So it's really great. It's all up on the wall, and kids pick their mascots and whatnot, and so they're all really pumped up about that. And then the other team is doing a March Madness, March Reading Madness. So they're having a bunch of reading groups, and staff are joining the reading groups. It's the whole team. The kids are doing the reading groups. Actually, Hannah Hackett is the kind of the brain that's behind it all. I'm going to be jumping into a reading group, and a lot of stuff we're going to be doing with the kids as well. So a lot of fun things happening there. And then on March 27th, the chickens will be hatching in Mr. Dolos's science room. So that's going to be very exciting. Mr. Kucher and Mr. Dolos, we're going to be having some chickens in the hall, which I know doesn't always make my maintenance staff happy, but it makes the kids happy. So thanks, Steve. So that is up to the minute at the peer school. Any questions?
I just want to make a real quick comment, how appreciative we are to hear this wonderful report, all the reports coming from each school, and how it warms my heart to hear all the wonderful wellness activities that were going on. And really do appreciate it. And it's really wonderful to hear about how well it's received. And we know how important it is for the mental, social, emotional health of the students, the staff, you know, being able to interact with each other and see the smiles from everyone. And it really does go a long way, and I just thank you for sharing that with us.
You bet.
Thank you, thank you. On to the high school, Mr. Warner.
I like the tie.
Thank you. Come by the high school, see you again tomorrow. I try to get as many days out as I can. Thanks for having me. So a lot going on at the high school. I, too, want to say having the masks off really puts kids in a different mind frame. And it's really neat for the seniors as they get ready to start their last, well, they've started their last semester, but they're getting ready to finish their school year here in Narragansett and get ready for life after Narragansett High School. So it's exciting to see and starting to gear up for senior projects again. And hopefully, that's going to get back to the way it used to be. And so people are very excited about that. I want to congratulate a couple of students as our Athletes of the Month. Maggie Taplin, who is a sophomore in girls' swimming, and Jacob Correa, who is a junior in boys' hockey. We've had a great winter season. Our girls' swim team were state champions, which is wonderful. They had racked up 444 points, 138 points more than the next team behind them. So they won every relay. They had probably 12 kids scoring multiple points in multiple races. So they really did a great job. Congratulations to the girls' swim team. Our boys' basketball team went into the playoffs, although they didn't make it to the state finals. They've been successful over the past few years. And we're getting ready for spring sports. Our boys' hockey team, who co-ops with Charahoe, they made it to the state finals, ended up losing a three-game series to South Kingston, but it was a great, great series, and it was exciting to watch. So this Friday, the junior class will be performing The Variety Show. That's coming back after a couple of your absence, which is pretty exciting as well. I'm sure you guys remember The Variety Show. Unified Basketball also is up and running, and that's always a fun thing to see. We, too, are getting ready for our PSATs and SATs, which will take place on April 13th. The end of our third quarter is April 8th. And our junior prom is going to be held this year at the Warwick Country Club, and that's also on April 8th. I also want to mention, we had a Peer Plunge design winner. The Lions Club does a little competition, and they offer art students at the high school an opportunity to develop the logo for the Peer Plunge. And it was Calvin St. Regana who created the design, ended up getting a $100 honorarium from the Lions Club, and it was presented to him by Ethan Farrell, who's a former graduate of Narragansett High School. So we're getting ready for our final push. Course selection is already underway. We're trying to get our schedule together, and just a lot happening at the high school.
Any questions? Diane?
Is it too early to ask about college acceptances for the seniors?
It's a little early. I can come with a list for next school committee. They're just starting to trickle in now, and I'm happy to provide that to you. So it is a little early. December 1st was when applications go out. Usually, they will hear something sometime in March or April. So it's a little early for that list of college acceptances.
Yeah, I would appreciate seeing it when it's assembled.
Sure, happy to do that.
Any other questions for the high school? Okay, thank you. Special services. Or student services, sorry.
That's okay. We think we're pretty special. So both the middle school and high school, I've already talked about the Unified Basketball, but I have had the pleasure of spending the last two nights cheering on Narragansett. Last night, the high school at SK. And today, I did run to Charahoe before coming back to cheer on our middle school. If you have an opportunity, and if you don't have the schedule, we'll get it to you, you have to go to a Unified Basketball game. I'm going to get a little emotional, probably. It is just the best example of sportsmanship. Our kids are so kind to one another, but also to the other team. So a student that's really struggling to get that ball in the hoop, our team will rebound the ball and hand it back to them five times till they finally get it in. And everyone cheers, whether it's our team or not. It's just, it is so awesome. And it's a time where students who maybe struggle to learn or struggle to even interact with peers are just shining. So if you don't have a schedule, we'll get it to you. You have to go. I think the high school game might be at home next week. So I highly, and I, it might be against Westerly. So I think it will be, it'll be a good time, and you will enjoy it. So I had an opportunity to pull together my own team last Friday. Each year, the state of Rhode Island does a Transition Institute. And what they do is they ask you to pull together a team of leaders and special educators from the middle school and high school to reflect on how are you meeting the standards to make sure that your students are college and career-ready when they graduate, whether it's at the end of their senior year or during, after their transition program years. So our team did a self-assessment. We completed some professional development with other districts throughout the state, and then we developed a plan. And this was a very detailed action plan. And we've set a goal of making sure that we're working together to increase the participation of students in not only the development of their IEP, but also their participation in the IEP process. I'm really excited to be able to use the Curriculum Academy this year to pull together a team of special educators throughout the district. And our goal is to create a progression chart. So what does it look like for an elementary student to participate in their IEP, a middle school student, and a high A middle school student and a high school student? And how do we build that self-advocacy throughout the years so that when they move on to either a career or college, they have the skills to self-advocate for themselves? We're going to pull in national resources. So we're really excited about that and certainly will share that as that's completed. Jill has been working really closely with our school psychologists from the middle school and the high school to do our safety care training. So every district is required to do training for specific teams within each school to make sure that the teachers on that team or the staff on that team have the strategies to help students proactively self-regulate and to de-escalate. And then there's also some training, although we hope we don't have to use it, on how to safely intervene physically if needed in a situation where there was a need because of an escalation. So each team has completed day one of training and they'll finish this training coming up in our next week. So we really appreciate that. Jill and I have the honor of hosting all of the Southern Rhode Island Special Ed Administrators tomorrow. And we actually have some charter schools who are also joining us. And we're going to be focused on how are we providing specially designed instruction to our students? How are we as administrators supporting our staff? And how can we share resources amongst the Southern region? And the number one question that you always ask, there are currently 55 students enrolled in preschool for next year. Any other questions?
No question. I just want to comment and share your sentiment around the emotion and the joy with Unified Athletics. I have a cousin who's a Unified athlete and to see him in his games with the relationships and the self-esteem that are a result of that, just as if they were, you know, in a varsity sports, right? But having the opportunities for students who are otherwise often, I don't want to say dismissed, but sort of looked differently and are, are not so often welcomed into the group, to have those opportunities, it really is something. So thank you. Just a question, what other Unified sports does Narragansett offer?
So that is a great question. I know we have middle school and high school basketball, but I say this often because of COVID. I'm not quite sure what we have. Do we do volleyball? Did we do it this year? I think because of COVID volleyball might have been delayed, so that'll come back next year. But volleyball and basketball are the two sports.
And could you share the schedule with us?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have one. The student involvement in the IEP process that you mentioned, are, are we a forerunner in that? Or is that, is that a national model that we're mimicking or is that something we're developing?
So starting at the age of 14, in the state of Rhode Island, it's required that a student is invited to their IEP meeting. The federal government requires students to participate at the age of 16. So Rhode Island does start a little earlier. Are we a forerunner right now? Check back in a year, we're going to be ahead of everyone. Because we've got just a passionate team and they're really excited about it. And I think it's just, we've got pockets of excellent practices right now. We just need to get that throughout our entire district.
And, and the workshop that you mentioned for tomorrow with all the administrators coming in, and we're hosting it, are you also a presenter at it?
I'm facilitating it, yes.
You're facilitating the whole thing?
Yes.
That's, that's wonderful.
Great, any other questions?
Just one more comment. I appreciate the sort of broader collaboration. Right, so we're, we're not single focused in a particular education system, but to be so broad that we're fully inclusive of, of learning programs, I think is a great way to expand learning opportunities as well as best practices. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're on to school committee reports. Does anyone have a report to give? Alex, you want to go first?
Yep. Just real quick, the, there was an interactive diversity presentation that was held on March 14th during the staff's professional development day. It was well received based on the survey results from that session. Our diversity and equity team, which consists of teachers, parents, administrators and high school students, continues to meet regularly to work on goals and actionable steps.
Anyone else have a report to give?
Just a short one. Earlier today, I, I participated in the Hassanfeld Institutes for Robert's Rules of Order, which is always a, a good refresher course. And Robert's Rules is now in its 12th edition and it is now 714 pages. So that's a lot of rules, but we try to follow them all.
Thank you, Diane. And my only report to give is just that we did complete our two budget workshops. Each budget workshop had different areas of focus. The first one was really kind of school-based and we had some other areas and just kind of dove deep into many topics from transportation to facilities to capital improvements to school-based. So I thought those workshops were very helpful and beneficial. And Justin and I also attended a capital reserve committee with the town council, just so kind of we're sharing our long-term capital plan and the big focus for next year, which is the auditorium renovation, which I'm very excited to see finally happen after a decade of trying to get that done. Okay, so with that, we're on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cummings?
Great, thanks Tammy. So our principals did a wonderful job presenting and, you know, their thorough reports tonight. So thanks to you all. And I just want to acknowledge their hard work throughout, not only throughout the whole school year, but certainly in this time of transition as we kind of go from a full COVID alert to kind of easing back on some of our restrictions. You know, I, I walked into the elementary school the other day and they were doing some instruction with, you know, with our little ones about how to play together at recess, right? And how to do, you know, there's so many little things and they've been, you know, so thoughtful about kind of reorienting students back into, you know, a more normal way of being. And, you know, for, for many of our littlest ones, they've never experienced school without that. And in, in each one of our schools, we have large cohorts of students that have never experienced that school kind of in a normal way. And so there's a lot of re-teaching to do and our principals and assistant principals and, and deans have been leading that work. And so I'm really appreciative to them for the thoughtful way that they've been working with our staff, working with our parents to kind of get that going. So I won't rehash many of the great things that they talked about. I do want to go back to the beginning of our meeting and mention the scholarship that is going to be put forth in Frank White's name. And so, you know, donations to that scholarship can be sent to the Narragansett School System, just in the memo line, the Frank White Memorial Fund or, or along those lines, just so we know what it's for. And we will finish setting that up and, and working with Frank's family. So also, as Tammy mentioned, we've been going through the budget process. We'll talk a little bit more, more about that as we get to the business part of the meeting. But again, you know, very thoughtful workshops and people have been really bringing some great ideas forward. You know, the good news is that it does look like the state is going to support the, keeping the state funding level for this year from last year. So we are, you know, cheered by that. I think there's some work going on, on the funding formula at the state level. And there are a number of bills in the legislature having to do with education, so we keep a close eye on that. One of the things that, you know, always worries me is that people have their pet projects. And, you know, whenever we add something, you know, it's a greater burden on our teachers. And so we're really trying to make sure that we are keeping things focused on the core elements of instruction as we go forward. You know, one or two other things that are really important to mention. You know, one is that the state has revised their calendar. And so the calendar that we originally built our calendar off of did not have the primary day, right? They have since moved that and identified primary day as, as a day that we need to do a PD day. So we'll probably bring that back in, when is it now, March? In April, to make some adjustments to that calendar going forward. And, you know, the second piece that I just want to highlight is that, you know, we are very early in the planning process for next year. So we're just approving our budget, we're just approving our staffing, we're really thinking through those things. So, you know, there, there are lots of things that are in the works in terms of serving students going forward. And, you know, we'll be coming to you once we start to implement the budget and really thinking about our staffing. But we are going to start the hiring process internally this week, then we kind of move to external from there. We'd like to get out there early. And we do have a number of open positions this year because of retirements and changes in program. So we're looking forward to getting that ball moving. And the final piece of news I have, which is really great news, is that our SO3 application has been approved. And so I'm grateful to Karen and to Gail for their hard work on that. That's a significant accomplishment. I think there were many districts across the, the state that are still working to go through that approval process.
So I have a question really for Pete and for the committee. And I reached out to you about this, Pete. So the calendar, which we already discussed for two months and then approved, so if we're going to make it a no school day for students for primary day, which is going to add an extra day at the end of the year?
We will probably move the March PD day.
Okay, okay.
So it won't extend the school year?
So we've got to bring the calendar back in April because you're recommending that we close for primary day and have school in the March day, like do a swap and stuff like that. So I'm going to throw something out because I have been thinking a little bit more about February vacation. And I know some of the districts are really kind of struggling with trying to figure out what to do with that. So I know we have approved our calendar, but now that we're bringing it back for a vote, would, and I asked Pete about this, would anyone on the committee be opposed if we just pretty much did like a one question survey just to try to dip our families? It's really about February vacation, about, you know, if we do the full week off, you know, that's really adding three extra days, you know, in June. It's pushing us pretty late in June, especially, you know, with June 19th being a federal holiday. Or if we keep the two days, you know, but it's a two-day that. So because we have to bring it back, would you guys be opposed if we just, I mean, we're not trying to open up everything, but just kind of dipped people about their thoughts about February vacation?
I fully support that idea.
I think it's a, it's a really great idea. I know it's something that they've done in other neighboring districts as well. I know North Kingstown just did that. And I know you guys have done it in the past and it was very well appreciated by those parents, staff that took part in the survey. And I know we can only benefit from this and we want to be as transparent as possible. And if, if this is a recommendation that's on the table, I fully support it.
You guys okay with that? And I, you know, when we did it a few years ago, and we did it a couple of years in a row, it always came out like 50/50. So might it come out 50/50? I don't know. I mean, who knows, like with, with COVID? I don't know. But I, I, at least if it's 50/50, we're still stuck with it's up to the five of us. But if it is, has now shifted where it's 60, 70% strongly favor one over the other, at least it's a data point to look at. And then at least if we dip our families, then if it comes out 50/50, then that means half the people are, might still be pretty mad. At least we can say, well, we're split. There were X number of people that answered the survey and it was 51%, 49%. So, you know, here we are, so.
We got the addition of June 19th as a holiday, which affects it. And I wonder what the other districts are going to end up doing as well with their polling?
They're still trying to figure it out.
Actually, yeah. North Kingstown, I know just, it was like 53, 47%. It was like a very close split. It was quite surprising, so.
I'm not surprised. This seems to be a very consistent number across the board, not only when we poll, but when other districts poll as well.
Well, you know, even, even still, you know, I don't know when the last time it was a, a survey was sent out, but at least we'll be able to say, hey, we, we sent out a survey and it'll be an accurate depiction on our, you know, our parent body or student body and their preference. And I know it would mean a lot to them and, and, you know, we, we always say that we are caring for them and, and I believe our actions speak volume with that. And this is just one additional way we can show our support.
Lauren and Pete will come up, you know, with the survey and the format. And so we definitely want it to go out pretty quick, so it's out for a couple of weeks. So we have time for Pete to organize the data. So when we have our April meeting, which is pretty soon, Pete can come to the meeting to say, here were the survey results, so we can have that to kind of inform us. Because our April, school committee meeting is April 13th, so.
No problem. So we're happy to do it, you know, and again, I think more data is better. And so we, you know, are happy to put the survey out there. We'll let you all have the results and you all can decide from there.
Yep. So we just have, we've got to give them clear direction about, keep using the word dip, but you know what I mean, about, you know, definitely we want to ask our parents. I think it's, I think it's the same question that goes to our teachers. And then, you know, if, if you're going to ask the kids, you've got to like, I don't know. So we, we've got to give them some direction about who is the stakeholders? Like, is it going to be just parents? Is it going to be, you know, parents and teachers?
Well, I definitely think it needs to be parents and teachers. I think, you know, our schools are only as strong as everyone that's running it. So this is going to be just as much of an impact on the administration or teachers as it is our parents as well. And we want to show that we're supporting all members in our Narragansett School community. So I fully support a survey going out to both parents and administrators.
You guys want to leave it with parents and teachers and then the child can give their voice to their parent? We'll leave it at that?
Yep.
I personally rather include the students as well as a separate category.
So what age group? I mean, we just, we have to be?
If it's going to go for the whole school system, we might as well do kindergarten through high school. I mean, I know there'll be issues with the younger kids being able to fill out the survey accurately, but.
Right. So I, I, what I would suggest to you, right, is that, you know, really middle school and high school, and I'll talk to please that may be appropriate for our fourth graders. But, you know, really much younger than fourth grade, I'm not sure that's an appropriate dipstick, so to speak, right? And again, we do have a model survey that we've used in the past, that we've used with students and, and parents. So we're happy to do that, no problem.
The biggest thing would be with this is to see if there's discrepancy between any of the groups, if the teachers favor one versus the parents or anything. But as past experience has shown, there wasn't. So we'll be interested if that has changed.
All right, well, thank you guys.
Thank you, Tammy.
Peter, do you have anything else with the superintendent's report? Because I know the budget will come when we do a motion to approve that. Any other, anything else from the superintendent's report?
Yep, that does it.
Anyone have any questions for Pete? Okay, thank you. So we are on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent to approve consent agenda items CA 1A, CA 1B, CA 1C, CA 1D, CA 2A, CA 2B and CA 2C? Any discussion on any items? All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes 5-0. Onto the budget report, Karen?
Expenditures for the eight months ending February 28th, total 17,732,721 dollars. And that's 53.40% of the budget. Expenditures and encumbrances total 30,132,570 dollars. And that's 90.74% of the budget. And of course, I will try to squirrel away some of that money.
Any questions for Karen? All right, so we're on to school committee business item number one. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, the director of finance and administration to approve the purchase of a Kubota compact Cub tractor?
administration, to approve the purchase of a Kubota compact Cub tractor in the amount of $68,688.30?
So moved.
Discussion? Hi, Steve.
Good evening, everyone. So it's a Kubota lawn and snow removal tractor for all of the facilities in the district. It's replacing a 1988, very tired piece of equipment. And we had to go locally to get it because to order one is a year and a half. So that's what I have.
Any questions for Steve? Alex?
Just for my own education, do we currently have anything like this? Or is this something brand new?
This is a little bigger machine for snow removal. We're purchasing it with a snow blower on it, so it's got to have the horsepower to drive that snow blower for the safe routes to schools around the, all the new sidewalks around the buildings.
Excellent.
They're hard to get into with plow trucks.
And is this comparable, like, again, I have no idea what these usually go for with prices, so.
Yeah, the price is right in average with other manufacturers. This also is on, from a master price agreement.
Okay.
So it's state bid, Massachusetts state bid.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
So it wasn't on the Rhode Island master price list?
There's no equipment in Rhode Island available. So it's a year, it would be a year, almost a year and a half to get it if we ordered it.
Really? Just over the line, they have them?
Yeah. Fortunately, it took a lot of searching to find it, so.
Better get it quick.
Let's approve it right away. For our Easter snowstorm.
This story, this budget season's been, oh, look, a supply chain problem.
Any other questions for Steve? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Item number two, is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent to approve the educational support professionals contract for 2022 to 2025?
So moved.
Discussion?
So Diane and Josh were on this committee. So we negotiated with the educational support professionals, who are bus drivers, our custodians, our maintenance workers, and our teaching assistants, and our secretaries. And again, they have been absolutely wonderful with us. I would say that, you know, like all negotiations, there's some give and some take. But it was, I think, had a positive and collaborative tone, and we did a lot of problem solving together. Of professionals where we often, it's often difficult for us to hire, right? So we often have a lot of challenges in hiring bus drivers and finding the right maintenance workers and finding the right teachers' aides. And so overall, you know, over three years, it's a 9.5% increase. These are our lowest-paid employees. And so just keeping up with the rate of inflation as well as kind of the cost of living adjustments going forward, again, and speaking with our negotiating committee, that did seem like a reasonable piece. Another highlight of the contract is some adjustments to healthcare that will really address some of our post-employment benefits. We believe that in working with Blue Cross and the WB and with our unions, that is one that long-term is a win-win, where it will reduce some of our long-term obligations, but also ensure our employees have some long-term care. And so overall, I highly recommend this to you. And I recommend this to you really with the thanks from both our negotiating committee, Lisa was there as well, and Karen, and from the union side as well. And they jumped right into it in the spirit of problem solving.
Any questions for anyone? Alex?
Just a quick comment. Appreciate the work that Diane and, oh my God, Josh, thank you. I saw Frank when I was just looking, I'm sorry. And Pete, that you worked with them on this committee. And this was actually my first time actually looking through this. And appreciated that when there's like a distance learning day, that there's still opportunities to engage in alternative work assignments. And, you know, that really stuck out to me, and I'm really happy that we offer that.
And I just want to second that. Thank you both for serving on this committee. We really appreciate that. And I really appreciate the collaborative spirit, and I'm glad that it's March, and we're ready for a vote for that. That is really good news. And we're very grateful for all of our education support professionals because it takes a village, and they are a really critical part, and especially during the pandemic. Very much appreciated. All right. So with that, there's a vote on the, a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. Motion passes 5-0. Lauren or Pete, is there anything that you want me to physically sign tonight with this? Do you want to just bring it up? Because I feel like at the end I might forget. So can you just hand that to Pete? And I'll make sure that I sign that before I go home, so I don't have to make another trip back. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay. All right. So let's move on to item number three. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent to approve the school committee meeting schedule for 2022, 2023?
So moved.
And discussion? I had one quick question for everyone. Our very first meeting is like a workshop format, and the date penciled is July 20th. And I didn't know if anyone would be opposed to moving that sooner. Pretty sure my, I've got a little trip planned, and I'm pretty sure it's the next day or it's that day. So I don't know if anyone, Pete, I don't know if you've built that around any travel plans for yourself or anything? Anyone opposed to even like a week earlier, or?
That would be fine. I think we just copied what we did last year, quite honestly, in terms of the preference of the committee last year was to have it be a little bit later, but travel plans change every year, so we can certainly make that adjustment.
Yeah, I mean, the third Wednesday, which is our traditional meeting night, is Wednesday, July 20th. But I just didn't know if anyone would be opposed to moving it one week sooner to Wednesday, July 13th, or whatever.
I have no preference for that, so. Yeah, I'm not opposed.
Me neither.
That works too?
Yep.
Okay. And that'll be a workshop format? Okay. So everyone take a look at the other dates. Pretty standard, you know, what is presented, we're trying to stick with that third Wednesday, unless of course, you know, it's a vacation week or so forth. And our August one, sometimes, you know, that's, I guess the question for Pete is, I'm totally fine with that. Does, is, that probably is like just-right timing if you have some last-minute hires because the third Wednesday is the 17th, and school with the kids starts after Labor Day. So that probably, that's probably a good time to just keep it, the predictable one where it was as far as any purchases or last-minute hires. Seems to be in a good spot, right?
Correct. So the only one I would call your attention to, is that if, nope, that will work. Actually, I was going to say, we, if you do decide to put a full February vacation in, I was going to see if that was scheduled, but it's before that. So other, should be all set.
Sorry, my question here, April, that's not the vacation week, the third week of April.
Next year it's not, but we will double-check that.
Yeah, and it's, it's, so.
It's early next year.
The draft that we approved, so Good Friday is April 7th, Easter is April 9th, and, because I was just looking at our Naragansett calendar, the vacation that we approved was that week of the 10th through the 14th, which is, I think, that must be what the state had in theirs as well. So they had Good Friday and then the week after. And it is interesting because we talked about that for a while, a long, for a long time, it was like, we're going to mirror Massachusetts, and we're going to be off for Patriots' Day. And it really was like Boston Marathon Day, Patriots' Day. It was like that week of that, the 17th. So this is, you know, for Rhode Island, this is sooner, you know, the second week.
I remember thinking the last time when we reviewed the calendar, that that week is typically also PSAT/SAT week for high schools. So I wonder what that's going to look like now.
That's a great question. We have asked that and have not yet received a response.
Last thing you want to do is test a week after vacation?
Correct.
Well, it is interesting. I mean, it's like we're mirroring what the state put out for an April vacation week. And I think a lot of districts, you know, maybe there's certain things they can't decide on, but it'll be interesting to see if most people follow the April vacation week that the state picked.
My sense from the other superintendents is that most people are in alignment on that April week. And again, we're, I think people are generally disposed to try to follow the state calendar whenever possible, with some mitigating circumstances around local conditions, for example, Naragansett wanting to start after Labor Day.
All right. Any other questions or comments about the proposed school committee meeting calendar?
Just a quick follow-up. And I think I already know this, but we're no longer on local TV channels or anything. It's only via YouTube. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So there is a motion on the floor with that revision of changing that first date from July 20th through to July 13th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, aye? Any opposed? All right. Motion passes 5-0. All right. On to the final and most important thing of tonight's meeting, the most important vote, anyway. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent and the director of finance administration, to approve the fiscal 2023 budget in the amount of $34,659,329?
So moved.
Discussion? Peter?
So, thank you, Tammy. So this budget that you have on the table reflects the adjustments made during the workshop. And so the increase from the original proposed budget really comes most significantly from an increase of, to our OPEB contribution. So if we were to review the increases that happened through the workshop process to fully fund the OPEB actuarially determined contribution for next year, that was an increase of $165,545. There were a couple of other minor increases. One was for a high school assistant swim coach because our numbers are up, and as you heard tonight, they're having remarkable success. One is for some supplies that are due to a new state mandate around what we need to have in our laboratories. And the last is some playground supplies for our new preschool playground. And so the total increase was $179,545. So that then gets to the proposed budget. I will highlight two other things. One is that the requested contribution from the town is at 2.1%. And so, you know, we were able to keep that within reason from where we were last year. I believe last year we were at 1.8%. And so that is, again, supporting this. I will mention that in Naragansett, when you rank kind of all of the towns together in terms of the overall percentage of the town budget that goes to education, Naragansett is second to last. We are at 50%. The only one lower than us is Newport. And that is, again, they receive a large amount of state funding there. And so, you know, I do think a 2% increase is a reasonable ask, you know, given that statistic and also given kind of the performance of the school system. Our overall increase is 4.3%, 4.37%. And that is, again, factoring in use of fund balance, use of state aid, and those other factors going forward. And so I do highly recommend this budget to you. I think, you know, first of all, I'd like to thank Karen for her incredibly hard work on this. You know, she knows every detail, has worked through, makes sure everything aligns. And because of her hard work and Emily's hard work as we go through on the staffing, we really do have a great understanding of where our money is going, you know. And I will say, you know, if you want to know the values of a school system, follow the money, right? And our money really goes to the classroom. And so I am really, you know, proud of the work that went into this, and I think it does have the right priorities going forward.
So Pete, I think that last point that you brought up is a really, really important point to emphasize in your presentation to the town council. So I'd really like to see you add a separate slide. And so whether it is, you know, a mini-chart that actually shows like all the towns and that we're second to the bottom, second lowest, or you want to make a colorful graph that shows surrounding towns near us or something, even, you know, perhaps worthy of two slides, like here is the whole state, and then here's a different graph or pie chart or whatever, like something, it's a really remarkable point that's really, we should be really proud of, the excellence in the system, but also the burden on, not the burden, that's not the right word, the ask of the taxpayer or whatever. That's a big deal. So however you want to highlight it to really emphasize that point with the town council, that's an important point.
Right. And, you know, many South County districts are close to 70%. You know, others are, you know, in the, in the high 50% range or 60. So we really are even regionally the lowest.
In your opening comments, did you say something about the state aid changing? And so is this figure still the accurate one?
Yep. So the state aid actually remained stable for this year. We do anticipate it changing for next year. So they did, they were able to support it. And so that figure is accurate, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for Pete before we take a vote? Alex?
Just a quick comment, just echoing how complimentary we are to you, Karen, Pete, Lauren, each of the principals, Lisa, Marion, Dan, for their hard work, and everyone who showed up to the budget workshop meetings. Your input was very valuable and appreciated as we were working through these budgets. And I found it very helpful to even go through the items line by line, and it was very thorough and really appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Just to make it public, where could someone find this information? Thank you for asking, Josh.
A parent or community member? Right. So it is right on our website. There is a very, you know, if you go to the main page of our website, right, it is right there. You just click on budget information, and all of this information is right there, supporting documentation, the full detail budget, budget presentations, as well as the summary documents.
Thank you. Full transparency, I haven't gone through the website to find it myself, so I was just really curious as to the accessibility of this information.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Any other final questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Pete and Karen, and everyone's work on the budget. Really appreciate that. Does anyone have any communications to mention before we close? Okay. So on March 28th, Dr. Cummings is going to present the school budget to the town council at 7:00. And I assume it's going to be here in the large assembly room here.
Yes.
Is that a, that is not a regular town council meeting, correct? That's an off Monday night? Is that, oh, actually, that's a Tuesday? No, wait a minute. What's going on here? I'm in the wrong year. Sorry. It's a Monday, and that is an off Monday night, correct?
Correct. We typically request an off Monday night.
Yes, we do.
That's the focus of that conversation.
Excellent. Wonderful. And then April 13th, we're here just a week earlier than normal because of vacation. We'll be here for the second Wednesday at 7:00. Okay. Very good. So is there a motion to adjourn at 8:30?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening.